Start the meeting. We will have a prayer led by Councilman Fitzwater followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to gather again and do the business of our great city. We thank you for traveling mercies. Thank you for the rains yesterday and also thank you for public safety, police and fire who helped some of our citizens navigate the rains. And we're just fortunate that there were no fatalities that I'm aware of, but there were citizens that had damages and losses, and we just pray that you be with them and their families. Thank you for the families represented here. We pray that you continue to be with our leaders on the state and national level and county level as we deal with this COVID pandemic and people involved. Just pray that you be with our men and women around the world as they continue to protect our rights to gather in events like this and discuss important issues for our community. Just pray all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Welcome everyone to the Monday, July 20, 2020 City Council meeting. And before I call the meeting to order, I will mention there is a call and phone number for anyone who's interested in participating. It is (404) 397-1516. The meeting number is (146) 1906006, and the password is 1234. You can get our full agenda at JeffersonCityMo.gov. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Item two, roll call please. Fitzwater?
Present.
Graham?
Here.
Hensley?
Present.
Hussey?
Here.
Kimna?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Vote?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
All right. Item three is their motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four miscellaneous agenda items. We finally get to recognize our former council members, Rick Mahalovich and Rick Prather. And we also have a special guest, State Representative Dave Griffith, who is here this evening. So I would like to invite all three of you to the podium tonight. Just keeping your six foot distance while you're up there. And as we stopped having our in-person City Council meetings in March, we did recognize you, but not in person. And so we're very honored to have you all here. So before we do our council recognition, I would like to turn it over to State Representative and former Councilman David Griffith.
Okay. Well, thank you all so much for having me here. One of the real honors that we have, and I have, is being your state representative is to be able to recognize some people in our community that have done some really outstanding things. And the two gentlemen that I want to recognize this evening are not only former colleagues of mine, but they're also personal friends of mine. And so it's really a double blessing for me to be able to do that. But before I do that, I want to thank each one of you. All of you that are sitting here doing this, I have been in your seats. And I can tell you that if you're doing it for the money, you need to find something else to do. But the public service that you provide for our community, really you don't get enough thanks for that. And I want to take just a minute to say that I appreciate what you do. I appreciate the time you put into it. I've tried to let people know when they come to me and talk with me about running for City Council, what all is involved. It's not coming just every other Monday. There's a lot of committee meetings and a lot of other meetings you go to. So I want to thank you, each one of you. These resolutions are made up of a lot of wherethes and theretwas and all that kind of stuff. And I'm not going to go through each one of those. But I do want to present them. Rick, I want to present this to you. And on behalf of the Speaker of the House, and on behalf of all the members of the General Assembly, we thank you for your service, and we appreciate the sacrifice that you have put forward for this community and for the state of Missouri. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Griffith. And if you would stay up here, because I know we'll want to get some pictures, so don't go too far. And it's an honor to have you here and to recognize our two former council members. And they have both had such fulfilling and wonderful careers with the City of Jefferson. We appreciate, as we used to call them, the two Ricks. And so we've really had both of you for eight years each, your full terms, and very appreciative of the work you've done for the City of Jefferson and for your wards. You've both really been great examples, and you are greatly missed. So I know that we're just glad to have you all here, and I'd like to give you each a moment at the podium if you want to say a few words as well. And then we'll see if council has any comments, too.
I'll try to make it really quick. It's great to see you all. It was a pleasure to serve with each and every one of you on the council. And congratulations to the new guys. We appreciate your service, and hopefully you really get as much out of it as I did. Really meant a lot to me, being on the council. And I do miss it, believe it or not. Not all the time commitment, but you know, people don't realize how much time it takes. And Madam Mayor, absolutely miss you to, you know, being on the council and, you know, your guidance and your leadership. And staff, I did get a chance to thank staff when I was, because of COVID, we weren't able to come in and talk to anybody. But I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, the department heads, everybody. Just thank you so much for your help and your guidance throughout the years.
Thank you.
Well, that would be ditto for me. Thanks. Thanks, first of all, to the mayor and Turgeon and your leadership. Thanks to all my colleagues, the council. Been great to work with each and every one of you. We may not see eye to eye, but we disagreed at times, but we were still colleagues at the end of the day and end of the vote. And especially thanks to the staff. What a tremendous job they do for the 400-plus employees we have. And they cover our backs. And also, we have to kind of remind them that we have constituents we need to answer to. But they're always professional, and they have kept this city running even under three major incidents. So my hat's off to the staff as well. And my fellow colleague, Rick Prather, has helped me along with finance and other issues that we had to deal with during our tenure in eight years. And so with all that, I just appreciate each and every one of you and the work you do and continue on. And we'll be behind you as a cheerleader. And I don't know if it's a humorous note, but last night is all I could think of is, I'm not getting the call. But I did give Mike Lester's contact information. And Laura's to a constituent who is having some issues. So.
We appreciate you both very much, and good luck in your futures, both of you. And appreciate Representative Griffith for taking the time to be here and to present those special proclamations this evening. And I do have some city plaques that I will present to both of you. And interestingly, they're both the exact same dates. So other than the end date, and the reason for the end date being different is with Councilman Prather's seat being unopposed, he left on April 20, and Rick's reads June 15. So I'll read them both. It says, "Councilman Rick Mahalovich and Rick Prather, in recognition of outstanding service to the people of the City of Jefferson, beginning April 16, 2012." And that's the same date for both of your beginning service. So we've been very thankful to have you for all these years, both of you, and it is an honor to recognize you tonight. So would council like to share anything? Councilman Schreiber?
Rick and Rick, you both are true gentlemen. You're great public servants. I valued your leadership and your willingness to share and to help me when I came on the council. And you're good friends, even though we had some pretty good arguments and didn't always agree. I have a lot of respect for both of you. So thank you very much.
Councilman Graham?
I know that we had a chance to say our one word to both of you all during our Zoom meetings. But I did want to reiterate the one word that was common for both of you when I did my description of you two, and that word was friend. And certainly, I'm honored to have known you all and honored to call you my friends. Like you said earlier, we didn't always see eye to eye on a vote, whether it was an easy vote or if it was a tough vote. But at the end of the night, we shook hands, and we departed friends, and we came back as friends, too. And I think that that's what made all of us, as a council and the mayor, stronger than we were from day one. So I just want to say thank you, and it was a pleasure and an honor to serve on this council with the both of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? All right. Thank you all. And why don't we, this will be an interesting one, to do a picture. So if you all would come forward, and we'll just maybe space out our council members so that we can try to get everybody here in the picture.
I have Carlos and Mike in.
Yeah.
Carlos, can you see me?
Am I smiling? Can you see my smile?
Yeah, I can.
okay?
Representative Griffith, please stay.
Okay. Item five, we have no public hearings. Item six, appointments by the mayor. We do have one recommended appointment for Environmental Quality Commission. This is Strope.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, we do have one appointment, and the recommendation is for Rachel Owen to the Environmental Quality Commission.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, we have no presentations this evening. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. We have four standing committees. Are there any committee announcements this evening? Councilman Hensley?
The Finance Committee will have its monthly meeting in this room on Thursday morning at 7:30 a.m. And then just a reminder that the first meeting of the Budget Committee, which is a committee of the whole of this council, will be next Monday evening in this chamber.
Okay. Thank you. Any other committee announcements? Okay. And item B, we have a Cole County press release regarding travel and face covering. So I would like to share that this evening. And this went out from Cole County Health Department that we work very closely with. And it was released on July 16. And it says, "At this time, 77% of the positive COVID-19 cases in Cole County can be traced back to travel and/or contact to a known cause. The Cole County Health Department is recommending that everyone reconsider traveling to an area of high risk. If you must travel, take precautions to reduce the risk. Wash hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, especially before eating. If not available, use hand sanitizer. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, or mouth with unwashed hands. Adhere to social distancing requirements, and do not be within six feet of others for more than 15 minutes. Wear a face covering when close contact cannot be avoided. Cover your mouth, nose with a tissue, elbow, or sleeve when coughing or sneezing. Upon return from travel, stay home or maintain social distance for 14 days and/or wear a face covering when around others outside of your household. Individuals who are sick or have had close contact with someone who is sick should stay home. Within your household, continue to practice precautionary measures to prevent the spread of your virus to other members of your household. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, especially before eating. If not available, use hand sanitizer. Cover your mouth, nose with tissue, elbow, or sleeve when coughing or sneezing. Do not share food or drinks. Avoid unnecessary close contact, and consider wearing a face covering. It is recommended that face coverings be worn when in contact with someone outside of your household within six feet for more than 15 minutes. Cloth face coverings offer degree of protection against large infectious droplets such as mucus or saliva when speaking, sneezing, or coughing. This particularly protects those around the person wearing the face covering and helps people who may have the virus and do not know it from transmitting it to others. Cloth face coverings are not considered an acceptable substitute for social distancing. Interactions within six feet of a positive case for more than 15 minutes will be considered exposure regardless of either person is wearing a cloth face covering. Cloth face covering should be washed after each use. It is important to always remove face coverings correctly and wash your hands after handling or touching a used face covering. For more information, you can visit cdc.gov. And also, as the situation changes, the Cole County Health Department will be sending out additional information. If you have questions, please consult a factual source such as the cdc.gov or missouri health dot missouri dot gov dot or backslash coronavirus. The community can also call the Cole County Health Department at (573) 636-2181, or Missouri Department of Health and Human Services 24-hour hotline (877) 435-8411 to address questions or concerns related to COVID-19. And we share this tonight because we do work very closely with the Cole County Health Department on all of the decisions we've made since the beginning, and wanted to share that because it outlines some very important messages about travel and face covering. So please keep in mind, as you're considering summer vacations and travel, that it is still considered high risk. So keep that at the forefront. Also, the importance of when and how to wear face coverings. And we hope that that can be done on a voluntary basis so that it would not have to be mandatory. But we do ask that you take these guidelines seriously and follow them. So do we have any questions about the press release this evening? We appreciate Cole County Health Department for sending that out. And we do have also, as part of this, a proposed proclamation that we would take up later in the meeting under proclamations that do also pertain to wearing masks at public meetings. So any questions on that? So we'll take that up later. And then I will go over a few other announcements this evening. I wanted to call on Mr. Marash to give us an update on the flooding situation in Jefferson City. I know it was quite a night here last night. I know that Councilman Fitzwater touched on that in the prayer, and we appreciate the service of our city employees in that disaster last night.
Yeah, certainly. Basically, we had a flash flood event that was pretty large. It's over 100-year event. So that means it could be, you know, various figures have been thrown around, a 500-year flash flood, maybe even larger. The data gets sketchy. But it just kind of depends on where your rain gauge was and how much you received and how quickly. But nonetheless, big event. And it seemed to be the most of the damage was from kind of central city to the east, although widespread throughout the city culverts exceeded. Got a lot of videos from residents demonstrating that to us. But one thing I will touch on, since we've implemented our floodplain code, luckily, all of those structures, meaning houses or businesses and things, were safe. Maybe the property had some issues. So a lot of the properties or structures that were affected, houses or business, were in flood-prone areas and may have flooded before typically. That doesn't help them at all, but it just kind of goes to demonstrate sometimes we are a little bit strict with our floodplain code and redevelopment of flood-prone properties. And this is one reason why, because you just don't know when these things will happen. But they will eventually. My note that, again, the staff's been out working, Public Works along with others, basically cleaning up today, cleaning up mud off streets, debris, things like that, pulling out large chunks of woody debris like tree trunks, things like that, that have washed into the system, got hung up on a culvert or something like that. So we're going about cleaning those up. Will take some time, obviously. And if anybody knows of one, they can certainly contact us here at the city so we can make sure we have it on our list to get it out of there and keep our culverts clear. Be happy to answer any questions. And typically, what we do after one of these, we'll kind of, you know, we'll get new data as the week goes on. This just happened yesterday. And we'll probably give a little summary at a Public Works and Planning Committee meeting of kind of where we saw structures flooded, kind of give a little update on the totals, things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Marash, for your effort with the flooding. We appreciate that. Does council have any questions? Councilman Graham?
Just a question for clarification. So if a tree falls into a creek or something like that, and it's blocking the flow of water, who's the responsibility on for that tree being the creek, or is that something that the citizens can call the city, and you guys will take care of that? How does that work?
Well, if it's in a street right of way or on the culvert, we would go out and go ahead and do that proactively. Now, if it's on private property, all of these erosion and flooding issues are private property issues. And I'm not the legal person here, but kind of the theory is, I think the legal theory is stormwater is the enemy of all, or something to that nature. But anyway, we're all have a duty to kind of protect our own properties. And so, you know, we get this call a lot, our erosion from these things, that's another thing. A flash flood like this goes up, comes down. One of the most evident cases over here by Coca-Cola, I've noticed today, a lot of banks showing just after this event. But again, it's all on private property issues there. And I think I put out a floodplain code and a little update, and Ken was good enough to send it back out today, the email that I put out about a week ago about erosion and private property issues relating to creeks and channels here in town. And it's really typical of almost all cities across the nation have a very similar code.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marash. Any other questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I was approached by employer of an individual that lives on Bald Hill Road. They had significant damage last night. There was some discussion or contention in regard to some trees or some materials that had been cut, trimmed, but stacked and not removed. Did that in any way cause part of the problems last night in diverting water unusually in its flow?
Yeah, and I've heard of that. And right now, I think that's kind of a rumor, or I'm not aware that we would normally, that would be outside of our normal practices to cut debris and leave it in a channel. We haul it away. So, you know, another thing with these storms, the water was so high, you know, it goes up in the woods and collects things. And, you know, we all have sticks fall in our yard, but there's, you know, it's just a constant supply of this stuff. And I think, like Carlos indicated, somebody had a tree in their channel. This is just Mother Nature's way of trying to get it to the river eventually. But, and it goes on down from there. But really, that issue, that's a very flood-prone issue. And like I said, in some gauges, this was classified as a 1,000-year event, the height of the water and the flow. So, you know, whether the culvert was there or not, it would greatly exceed that capacity. And the area you're talking about is a very flood-prone area, and it's well-known that has had flooding in that area in the past.
Well, they sent me the video of it, so I'm sure it's not going to end with just a conversation. May I assure them that I would talk to the appropriate, you know, talk to you and individuals. But my guess is it's going to be pushed and brought to your attention.
Right. And I would also say, we're getting calls, you know, there are legal claims, you know, anybody can make a legal claim, and we forward those to law when that happens. And, but our staff's available certainly to go out. And I've done this type of work in other cities and places. And, you know, we prefer to hopefully work with the homeowner, give them some advice how to protect the property. I've almost seen no properties that can't be modified to be flood-protected. I've seen one here in Jefferson City, but only one, and all the time, I've been here 18 years. And so, but that does cost the owner some money and how to modify their property. So we try to advise them on that, and that would kind of really bring it into compliance with current floodplain code standards, elevation-wise and things like that, which does work. And in the area you're talking about, I was aware of one that kind of tried to go that route. I'm not sure it was quite enough to even accommodate this storm. So this is off-the-chart storm. And when we talk about floodplain codes, that's another thing. I had this in my email. But we design usually to the 100-year flood event. And so that's 1% chance of happening in any given year flood. But that doesn't mean a bigger flood can't happen, and this was a larger flood than that.
Thank you. Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, thank you. And just to piggyback on Councilmember Fitzwater's comments, I and several others have also received calls and emails about that particular part along Bald Hill, particularly Calvin Lane. And up Calvin Lane, there were some improvements made, I thought, to the stormwater system within recent years, which is probably, I guess, where that, if there was stacked debris, where, you know, where that might have been created. But last night, after it seemed safe to venture out, you know, did a little tour of the neighborhood just to see if there was damage to be aware of, drove up there, and yeah, there was, the water had receded from the roadway, but all the debris was stacked, including some small appliances that had been pulled out of somewhere stacked along Bald Hill. So it seemed like they'd really experienced something rough. And even more unfortunately, that they weren't alone. All sorts of spots around town where, you know, emergency responders are having to conduct water rescues in the middle of streets. Just a really extraordinary event. And just so thankful again for all the emergency responders and Public Works folks. Thanks very much.
I will just clarify one thing. The project that was done in that area was a wastewater project. So it was meant to relieve water downstream, backing up in basements and such. And that's what that was really aimed at.
Thanks.
And this was really a stormwater flow event. Now, the two can kind of get muddled in large events like this, obviously, and we just kind of try to sort things out like that.
Thanks for clarifying.
Certainly.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilwoman Ward?
Hello. Just want to say thank you for getting Dunkland Street Bridge back up and running. Everybody's excited, in particular, the South Side neighborhood. I've been hearing a lot of positive comments. But it was underwater last night, and I was just wondering if it took on any damage at all, or, I know it's reopened, but...
Yes. So anyway, the bridge was raised as high as we could get it. We would like to have it higher. The limiting factor was the highway overpasses. So, you know, you have to have a certain amount of clearance to get under those. So I think we got it up basically around a foot higher than it once was. And it does flood there on occasion. I don't know how much water was over the road, but I'm not aware of any damage to it at all. So the time I got there, the water was back down, and, you know, it went up and down so fast. fast.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Marash, please thank city staff for working hard last night on that. Thank you again.
Sure.
And also, Chief Schofield, I know there were some, uh, water rescues, so we appreciate Jefferson City Fire Department as well being engaged in, in performing those life-saving measures last night as well. Do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add. It was just a, a very dynamic event, obviously, and so while there were only officially 25 calls for service, many of those were spontaneous, uh, and compounded calls that would occur, you know, as we were doing some rescue, there'd be another one required just downstream. So that was both off of vehicles and then into structures as well, so.
Well, we appreciate the training that allows you to be prepared for these kind of occasions, and we hope that we don't see them often, but when we do, we know that you're there, so, uh, we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. And going on to our announce, the rest of our announcements, item C is the Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Update, so, um, exciting news on the bicentennial bridge. We are working on a groundbreaking ceremony, so, um, I would just have you pencil this in, and so please don't report this, it's only tentative date, but we'll know this week. But the tentative date for the groundbreaking is Monday, August 10th, at 8:30 a.m. at the Capitol near the Veterans Memorial and the Senate Garage. So, uh, we should verify that here in the next day or so, and I'll be sure to get that date out with a press release for the public and also for council members as well, that we'll have that groundbreaking. We did our own groundbreaking with BJ DeLonge, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, in advance, and we, we hope she'll be able to be there. We're doing it in the morning, so it won't be super hot, but we would love to have people there to celebrate the groundbreaking as we begin that, that process. And we chose Monday, August 10th because next year that will be the date of our bicentennial, so we thought that would have a little bit of significance, so we're hoping to get all those details worked out, and we hope everybody can join us. I'll be sure to get that date finalized and verified. Um, other announcements, um, last week we did celebrate the retirement of Police Officer Sean Dumsday, who, um, has been with the city for many years and has been a big advocate for, uh, traffic, traffic safety enforcement, so we, uh, we will miss Officer Dumsday, but we wished him well in his retirement. And also on Saturday was, uh, the community bike ride, and, um, they do those about once a month, so if you haven't participated in that, that was fun, and we actually drove over the New Dunklin Street Bridge, I say drove, with our bikes, over the New Dunklin Street Bridge, so that was exciting too. And there was a ribbon-cutting for the port, or not a ribbon-cutting, press conference for the port project last week too, so that was, uh, I guess I'm getting confused with all our ribbon-cuttings and celebrations going on, but they did have a press conference about that, uh, giving the update because the governor signed the bill for the port. So that was very exciting to have that bill signed, and, um, they did that out at Rotary Centennial Park overlooking the river. And speaking of the community bike ride, um, and all the things happening in parks, I'll turn it over to Councilman Kimna for some park announcements.
Sure. Um, July 30th, which I believe is a Thursday, um, they're gonna have a community celebration for the new community park, um, that has been open for a couple of weeks now, and I, and I know I've been there and walked through, and it's, uh, I don't know if anybody else has been able to, to go through there, um, but it's a, it's a great place, and, um, just walking through, I saw, uh, all kinds of, you know, parents and kids and grandparents and, you know, alike kinda going through, and so it's really cool to see, and I know that park is, is gonna be the center for a lot of, you know, um, good times for, for this community. Um, so they're gonna celebrate that this, uh, on the Thursday, the 30th, from 4:00 to 8:00. Um, I think they'll have a few food trucks there, um, for you, and, and so if you're, if you're around, you know, swing by and, and be a part of it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilman Kimna. So are there any other announcements this evening? Okay. Item nine, Lincoln University, anything to report yet? Councilman Graham?
Uh, not as far as the student representative, but we are looking at opening on August the 24th, and we are looking at, uh, face-to-face, uh, unless something changed, but we do have a backup plan, but our plan at this point is to be face-to-face on August the 24th and hopefully be through by the, uh, for the semester, uh, by, um, Thanksgiving break, so.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. Do we have anyone, Mrs. Donaldson, that signed up?
No one has signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone on the line who, uh, is on to speak on item 10? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go on to item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduced 2026.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Circal Contracting in the amount of $136,800 for the Veterans Plaza renovations project, approving a supplemental appropriation from the J.C. Veterans Plaza Trust Fund balance, and accepting a donation and corresponding budget amendment.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Uh, I think the clerk said it pretty thoroughly, uh, but basically a little over $136,000 contract with Circal to, uh, modify the Veterans Plaza, so, uh, the Veterans Council and the various groups here in town have raised money to do this project. Uh, it, the city, uh, holds the money through, in a trust-type account, uh, so we're able to administer the, the funds and the contract for them. Uh, but, uh, basically add, uh, three new viewing cases for bricks, so folks that, uh, wanna honor their veterans can put, and buy a brick and keep this thing, uh, replenish the trust fund by doing so. Uh, it'll also modify the existing, uh, viewing boxes, so a couple more rows of bricks can be added to each one, and then, uh, some new pole lighting, things like that to better light the area.
Thank you. Any questions? And we do appreciate them doing that fundraising on their own, that's great.
Certainly.
Um, okay, 2020, number seven?
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule Z Residential Permit Parking Zones by addition of the east side of the 1400 block of Huff Park Road.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As the clerk indicated, again, uh, 1400 block of Huff Park Road near Morrow Heights School, uh, this would institute a three-hour, uh, residential permit parking zone. Uh, often areas near schools, uh, have folks parking in front of their houses, uh, for long periods, and, uh, you know, kinda blocking the area for their visitors and such, and so this would, uh, basically require a hang tag to park there. Uh, they'd also have hang tags if they happen to have a visitor or something like that that they could hand out, uh, while they're there. So, uh, you have any, answer any questions? It, uh, was taken up by our Traffic and Transportation Commission, didn't have any, uh, opposition at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Graham?
Just have a quick question. As it relates to, um, the visitors of hang tag, um, so is that the, the common theme throughout all of those residential areas where that sign is posted? Each resident have so many hang tags in their home for visitors?
Correct, and I think the visitor one even has a little different variation to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
And, uh, you know, they can get a different number of those depending on, on what the issue is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, 2020, number eight?
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated in the amount of $57,000 for the BioSolids Management Study Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Uh, as clerk indicated again, uh, a study with Burns &amp; Mac Consulting Firm out of Kansas City, $57,000, but basically they're gonna look at our BioSolids, uh, equipment and processes at the wastewater plant. Uh, our equipment's original to the plant, about 20 years old, and is in need of replacement.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, 2020, number nine?
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with RHK Airport Properties to build a combined facility to house a hangar, restaurant, and airport administration offices at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And I think, uh, two things, uh, I believe, uh, Ryan, our, our city attorney passed out an amendment that, uh, has the actual contract that, uh, our development agreement that would be voted on, and also it has a check mark, uh, requesting it be voted on this meeting. But basically, uh, this is the development agreement to allow, uh, two other contracts to go in place, and Ryan can explain those further if, if you'd like, but basically, uh, this developer will build a hangar, as, as the clerk indicated in the title, a hangar, hangar space for aircraft, uh, restaurant space and, and office, uh, offices for our administrative staff and, and conference room, replace the old terminal that was damaged by the flood, and, um, I believe this project is ready to get going. Have any answering questions?
Mr. Marash? And we have a substitute here, so should we go ahead and vote to accept the substitute?
Correct, and just to kind of, uh, detail what that entails, uh, Mrs. Donaldson has the complete package, so, uh, the, the package includes, uh, the airport development agreement, which you all have a draft of, uh, the legal description, uh, the plans, the, the drawings for the, which I, uh, put a copy in there for you, and then, um, Exhibit C is the ground lease, it's a standard ground lease, uh, that is executed by the city administrator, and then Exhibit D is the, uh, essentially the office, uh, space lease back, which is also a standard, uh, type lease for airport uses. Those airport leases are largely controlled by FAA law, so, uh, they're boiler, more or less boilerplate, uh, leases, but, uh, um, the full package, uh, Ms. Donaldson has, um, but, uh, in the interest of not, uh, doing the full volume there, um, I just gave you what I thought would be the relevant portions for the city council. So, um, but if, if, if it is desire of the city council, the, uh, the, uh, uh, packet as substituted, uh, is, is, uh, is present and available to be, uh, taken up.
Councilman Hussey?
So, Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to, uh, substitute the current bill with the?
The substitution is for the exhibit, not the bill.
Okay. So substitute the exhibit within the bill to reflect the development agreement that was handed out.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor to accept the substitute, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Um, motion passes, and we will take up, uh, 2029 if there's any questions or discussion of council, and we also have a check mark by it. Councilman Hussey?
So I would just add that I'll request that in a second. My understanding for the suspension of the rules to take us up this evening is just we're working with some FAA or federal resources as well, and we're, we wanna get this project rolling.
Right. The, the way I understand it is that the, we are, um, the approval from FAA is imminent, and we wanna make sure that we have these agreements in place before that, uh, approval from the FAA, um, comes down. If the, if agreements not, are not in place and the FAA is, uh, is ready for that approval, they may not give that approval. We'd have to push the project back, and this is, this is ready to go.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, I would add, or request the suspension of the rules to take up this bill for third reading and vote this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any objections to suspend the rules? If not, we will take up 2020, number nine.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with RHK Airport Properties to build a combined facility to house a hangar, restaurant, and airport administrative offices at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Any further discussion? Councilman Hussey?
I would just add that the Public Works Committee had maybe not seen the specifics of these documents, but has had meetings and conversations about this concept. I believe the developer even came to one of our meetings to present, um, and so it's not like this is, you know, first time this is before council members and such, and I would say that, gosh, what are we, 13, 14 months away from that airport being underwater, and to have a, a private developer that has interest in putting this project together for us, and I think really create a really good terminal space and get a restaurant back over there, like, this is a real solid, I think, win for the airport and win for the community, so I'm excited that staff and the developer are, are able to work something out and, and get things cleared with the FAA as well.
Despite the sweat on my brow, um, the, the, the details of this arrangement are the same as they have always been for the past 13, 14 months where, where it's essentially a net zero lease, uh, and, and the developer is building a, uh, building the, the terminal and office facility.
And I would add just for clarity, like, I mean, they're building something that is razed, so if we have future flooding over there, it's not, right, like, I mean, there's, just to clarify from that, but it's not like we could just renovate what we had.
Right.
Or, you know, just rebuild exactly what it looked like. We had, they have to do some things to make this different.
Exactly, and, you know, it's a little different even being, uh, in the river floodplain than other floodplanes, but, uh, uh, hangars can be, uh, built grade level where the airports pull in, basically a garage space, but it's built in such a way that it, uh, floodwaters wouldn't damage it, and it could be cleaned out fairly quickly. And this last flood, you, you saw that with, uh, people were back in business really quickly, uh, at least with the hangar space. Now, the elevated, uh, the, the restaurant and the office space and such things like that will be elevated, uh, above the, above the flood elevations, there'll be, uh, stairs and a, uh, elevator to get you in there, and so all that has to be designed special to withstand the flooding, uh, all the electrical work, things like that, things of that nature will be elevated and, uh, can be shut down during a flood. Obviously, you can't access it, uh, and have people there, but once it's, once the floodwaters recede, can be back in business fairly quickly, and that goes back to, uh, instituting that floodplain development code and making sure these things are, are, uh, can withstand some of these things, that have some flood resiliency is the, kinda the buzzword, everybody uses a little bit of resiliency in our, in our design so that we can get back in business quickly.
And, I mean, thank you for that, and Councilman Mahalovich was always a big advocate of the airport, and I think Frank Rysik is here, he's long-served on the Airport Advisory Committee, I don't know if you still do, Frank, but, uh, but real active volunteer in the community and passionate about the airport, so, thank you for the information.
Certainly.
Thank you, Councilman Hussey. Any other council questions or comments? Councilman Fitzwater?
Well, uh, I would just comment, I think the chairman did a good summary. The committee did spend a lot of time in, in working on this project, so I think council can feel comfortable that we did take a good look at it, and I would encourage support tonight.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, um, and welcome, Councilwoman Wiseman, and we are on, uh, 2020, number nine, so we're just getting ready to take a roll call. Do you have any further comments or questions?
No, I've been listening in.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, roll call, please. Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 13, Bills Pending 2020, number two.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing a budget amendment within the general fund and the wastewater fund to allow for the spending of insurance proceeds related to vehicle hail damage, claims to repair the damaged vehicles.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk read, and this is a budget amendment to allow us to repair 46 city vehicles that were damaged by hail, and the, um, amount of almost 143,000 is the insurance adjuster's estimate. So if you'll notice, um, in Section 2 of the bill itself, it does give the authority that if there are any adjustments or amounts that go over that, that it allows the city administrator to approve those, that we don't have to come back when those, um, numbers change. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Any deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Ward?
Aye.